Got a public comment card, please do so, they're in the back and provide it here to us and we'll get a chance to participate. So, in just a minute, council, are we?
We're ready.
Ready?
Sure.
City manager, ready to go? Are we doing the countdown? No. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. We are at one hundred Polk Avenue here in Cape Canaveral, Florida. City Hall Council chambers for our City of Cape Canaveral City Council Workshop. I call this meeting to order this time. Councilmember Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Thank you, and thank council, everyone, for being here. This is the second of, I believe, three workshops. Looking forward to this meeting tonight, and thanks all who's joined us here from the public and all the city staff and our partners who's helped put this together. This time, we've got a public participation portion of the meeting. Tonight, we're going to open it up to the public, we're going to receive a presentation, and then have an opportunity to go back to the public if needed, and then council can work through this with our city staff and Kimley Horn. But with that, I don't have any public participation cards here, so if council doesn't have any or maybe some didn't make it through. And if you wish to speak, submitted one, please, if you don't mind, raise your hand. Seeing none, go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting, which allows us to go to our presentation discussion, which is to receive the updated Civic Hub project information, receive public comment, and provide feedback for Kimley Horn and Associates, KHA, to understand the community's needs to be addressed in the redevelopment of the Civic Hub footprint, therefore providing KHA with the necessary information to finalize conceptual materials for this project. And with that, I think we can go ahead and go to our city manager, or Scott with Kimley Horn. Thank you, Scott.
Please, I couldn't wrap it up any better than you just introduced it. That was perfect, Mayor. Thank you. Scott?
Thank you so much, Mayor and council. I'm really excited to be here. I've been here and been engaged throughout the public meetings, and so some of this, you will have seen bits and pieces before. If there's, there's going to be about five major components of the, of this PowerPoint presentation that we're going to kind of walk through. Certainly, if you feel like, you know, you need to make a comment, we absolutely can have a dialogue and want to engage in dialogue, but I'll kind of keep moving through. I'll give you a little bit of air to breathe every once in a while. If you want to interrupt with some specific comments, we can do that as well. I'm stalling a little bit because I don't see it on your monitors yet, too, so.
Is it on yours?
It is not on mine, and it's not up there. I'll restart mine, and then maybe I'll...
There it is.
Okay, there we go. That's what we needed to do. Give it a minute. Council, everybody seeing everything at their screens? And they are.
Nice.
Good. Like I said, we're, I don't need to stall anymore. You will see some, a little bit of repetitive information. Because this is a public workshop, we just wanted to make sure that we gave a snapshot for the public, and then anybody else who missed maybe some of the first informational meeting to kind of get a better holistic understanding of where we've been, where we're going today, and so that we can kind of look and map them along and bring them along as a part of this process. So, we'll dive right in. This is kind of our agenda. Like I said, there's kind of five major components. We're going to blow through some of these quickly. We're going to talk about our overall process and schedule, where we are, give you a little bit of site context, not that you, council, need it, probably even folks need it, but it's just things that influence us as a part that hopefully will be reflected in the design. And so, we want to pull out some of those things. Some goals, you'll see, that are overarching goals, that we want to just continue to remind ourselves just as much as the public and everybody else, that these are major activities. We'll briefly go back and look at a couple of the comparable facilities, and then the heart of this is going to be around the master plan, our options, and then the next steps. So, really, the orange elements at the top, those are the things that we've already completed. Last time when we showed this, we were in step one for July twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, that public engagement meeting. We've done some draft master plan concepts. We are currently in step two, right there in the light orange. That's where we are. The next components, you'll see, we'll take feedback from input, from yourself, based on the specifics we have. We've actively been having calls even with staff to make sure that we are hearing correctly. A lot of times, we think we hear, and then when we show a picture, we're like, oh, okay, yes, let's refine that. So, you'll see more of that, and that's that step, and then fortunately, on a tentative date for our next council meeting, October seventeenth, come back with some preferred options as well. On the left side of this, this is obviously the Civic Hub location, and these are kind of our big reminders that we've set off to the side of why Civic Hub, why here? Obviously, it's next to City Hall. How are we building synergies around what we call a Civic Hub? And you have facilities here, so it absolutely makes sense, and how are we bridging that? Sometimes, it's just a concept, like we're currently working on a stormwater improvement project at the Vets Park. Well, all of this area needs to have a foundational underlay of how do we enhance, yes, parks, but your stormwater, because that's a big part of your overall city, your needs, your infrastructure, and so we want to do things that work hand in hand together all the way through. You also have a unique community program features that are here. If we look overall at your parks system, and we've kind of done that, and here's a list of some of those, well, this, there's not many other locations that have pickleball and tennis, and we're going to talk about some of those things. And we also wanted to make sure that we weren't doing facilities that you already had just down the street or had made improvements on, and so we don't want to have that at every park. We want to provide some diversity, as long as they're within walking distance, within close distance to each other. So, we've evaluated a lot of those things as well. And this is the central connection to other things, and that's what we want it to do. We want it to be a community connector as well as a physical connector, and we also want it to work with other projects and programs and plans that you have in place, and I've, again, talked about the Presidential Streets and other projects that we're doing with staff. We want to make sure that we're thinking holistically, so all of these work hand in hand. And the last one, which really is one of the major goals of this project, is the stormwater redevelopment area, and this is very similar, and the picture on the right is, again, the C-five park, the city park, where you have the storm chamber system for water quality underneath your current park. That's not what you see today, you see active, open space, but all of those facilities underneath there are what we're planning for, and so as a part of the program elements you'll see in the park, we'll show you the concept design, then we'll show you the potential stormwater areas that would be eligible for elements just like this. So, this picture, you see those yellow kind of half dome structures? Those would be going underneath the areas that we'll show you in each concept as stormwater eligible areas. So, if there's any question, I kind of looked around, make sure I was connecting with everybody, but we'll come back to that, because that's a very important part of not only your infrastructure to help overall within the community. And this is rendering that you've probably seen before of the Vets Park rain garden. So, again, comparable facilities, we're not going to spend much time here. We've looked at Cocoa, we've looked at Reader Park in Longwood, we've looked at those activities that they have, the major components of those, how they operate. Civic Hub has a great one in Rockledge, adjacent to City Hall, with an amphitheater, with tents and market space that is flexible, and added restrooms as well. So, we've tried to take some of those design ideas and blend them into the overall master planning process. Any questions so far? Keep planning ahead? Yes. Mayor Pro Tim, ready for you?
Yes. What do you call those yellow things that are used for filtering water? Exactly.
Those are actually an ADS, that's the name brand of that structure. It's a stormwater quality measure. So, they're, they're nothing more than a void, a system that allows you to put aggregate, like Fifty-Seventh Stone, you've probably seen that on the street. So, you put that aggregate in an area that filters the stormwater. It has a volume that is created by that half dome system, and it sits there, and it either infiltrates into the ground, but you have high groundwater here, because you're so close to the coast, or it discharges downstream in a, in a, in a, in a way that is over a period of time, and so all of the pollutants, the phosphorus and some of the other things, are withheld behind in those storm chamber systems. So, that's the water quality measures that you have.
Thank you.
I was checking, Tim, make sure we were, we were all, that's his, he lives it when we talk about stormwater enhancements, that's right. Staff loves that part. So, part of the master plan options, part of the critical things, and most of you are here at the community engagement. So, we talked about some things about where you are, where you're from, what are the opportunities, what are the things that you would like to see, and we had individual dialogue. You had dialogue with a lot of us, and that was even part of the master planning process, so we could hear the community's input nuances. We could help explain things like, well, what does an underground stormwater measure look like, and how does that? Most people won't ever see that stuff, because it's below ground. It's just what provides you opportunity to, to build back the project in a certain way. We also had public survey results, and if anybody has not taken a look at those final results, that QR code is active, and it will take you to the results page, so you can see what I'm presenting. I'm not going to give you all of the results, I'm just giving you a snapshot of that, but anybody in the community, if you haven't been to that site, you can go ahead and click on that QR code, and it is active to give you those public results. We want to highlight a couple of questions, and the main thing that we were looking at is to make sure that we had residents that were giving us the feedback and comment that we wanted to hear from, and we got a high, high degree of percentage back from whether it was city or county or just outside the city with active users. So, that was one thing, we want to make sure we were listening to the right constituents. And you can see, we're well over ninety percent of those that we got comment and feedback from, so we think that's valid and important feedback. We also asked, now, this is a question number eight already, so I've skipped through a number of the public survey results, but you can see, we asked, you know, what types of recreation activities, and I've highlighted the top, anything that at least had twenty percent or higher, and so we've kind of evaluated what people wanted to see and started to compare that through our options, and you can see those final results. We also asked them, with understanding that stormwater improvements were an absolute goal for this project, what are three other opportunities? And again, just highlighting all of the options that came up, they, there were a substantially amount of participants that at least had one of these in their top three, and so that gives us great feedback to know that we have consistency of thought from the public as You should have each of these in greater detail. I'm flying through some of these, and you probably, they're kind of a little small to read, but you ought to have the printout, and if we need to go back through, we certainly can. Two of the last questions we're talking about, give us the four amenities that you most want to see, and then the four amenities that you at least like to see, and so then we even kind of compared those across the lines to see where we had, and we looked at elements that at least twenty percent or more people said this is the most. So, in that orange box, at least twenty percent of the respondents said this is the most, the four things. So, we evaluated that, and then here's at least twenty percent or more said this is the least amount. And what we have to figure out, what staff and our team have collectively had to figure out, is where we had some potential inconsistencies, and what I'm highlighting there is, all right, well, dedicated pickleball is for the most, but it's also for the least. So, so how do we resolve that? And that's the nature of design a lot of times, right? It falls on either side of that. So, we're trying to work through, and we think we have some options that deal just with that component in our, in our options that we'll go forward and present. Any questions about the public results, the surveys, moving forward? So, option A, we have the boards for the public. I won't be able to kind of walk you through all of the elements that we're going to maybe walk through, and I'm just going to give you a quick overview of each of the three options, and then what I think will allow some time for you to maybe take some notes, digest it a little bit. You've already had them, maybe you already have some questions prepared, but we'll go through a couple of these, and then we'll enter, and feel free to stop me whenever you have a question, and then if I can ask, answer it, I'll kick it to one of my team members, too, over here, too, and they're, they're more than ready to jump in and help out as well. Concept A, you can see, and I won't go through all of these, the main thought process I'd like to think about is we've thought about eliminating the great divide of the street between kind of the existing facilities to the north and the Civic Hub where the Nancy Hansen Building is to the south, so that we can bring this entire project and property together, and then also create links back to the things that we say this needs to be a Civic Hub. So, make those links back to City Hall, back to the Arch Center, back to even the Sheriff and/or other locations up to Polk Avenue. So, we're taking the opportunities, and by this design, the street may look like it is, is still there, but it's completely cut off from A-one-A. It becomes a real active pedestrian plaza, pedestrian street, and that is the central spine kind of going east-west to connect these sides of the park together. In the long A-one-A, we also have a pedestrian spine, if you look at it, it's kind of a T, working north to south, coming from City Hall, continuing the plaza, continuing the materiality, continuing even the thought process where we have public arc, art and other elements working within that plaza, and that plaza crosses over, Taylor goes into the main kind of what we're calling the event space or the Civic Hub, where you would normally think that would occur. In this option, we have organized most of the food trucks and maybe even food vendors, where the parking lot is, where the old retail building, to the, to the northwest corner of this site, and we've tried to organize that in such a way so that you're taking advantage of the already subsurface information that, or substructure that is there. We might even have some great pedestrian vehicle, I'm sorry, vehicular access out to the north, that could be through emergency access vehicles, but have the, those trucks really in that food area, and then still have plenty of space for tents for your Friday Fest to occur all along the street in different areas. The main pedestrian access terminates or really kind of ends in that oval, with the north or the southwest corner being a major pavilion, amphitheater, structure so that it can be used for bands and performances, and then you have still a lot of event space and organized space out in front, and most all, if not all, of the major canopy and major trees that you have, because you have a lot of significant oak trees, we've tried to preserve in most all of these locations. In this option, we have removed the last three tennis courts to the southern portion of the project and changed that with, substituted that out with six pickleball courts, and then the other two courts are, would remain there. Now, one detail is if we're going to use underground stormwater, we would put underground stormwater and then refurbish those and bring those back basically in their same location, but we would take them out of construction, take them out of use, and then bring them back in as new courts. And here is this highlighted area that shows potential underground stormwater areas to be evaluated, and that will be part of our next step. When we refine these concepts based on public and your input, then we'll be able to dive in just a little bit more, come down on the funnel of our cone. Right now, we're at thirty thousand level feet, looking at a funnel, and we're going to pull it down just a little bit more, trying to evaluate stormwater based on your comments when we bring this back to you in October.
Scott, one of the observations I have there is that white area that you've defined as potential underground stormwater areas, appears the thinking there is, we don't want the stormwater to take out any trees, and we don't want to take out the Nancy Hansen Center, we don't want to take out the mural wall, I'll call it, but other than that, this is maximized for stormwater storage, so trees and those two structures are...
And then we would have to evaluate what new trees. We're showing some new trees back in there, now that's going to be part budget, it's going to be part, all right, what type of tree? Is it a palm? Can we do it in some areas that we don't have that? So, we're going to refine that element of detail as well.
Thank you.
And then likewise, Mr. Manager, we can extend that out into the streets as well, Fillmore, Point Setta, you know, the entirety of Taylor, et cetera.
Yep, that's a great point. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the stormwater issue, is there any way to estimate the volume that could be contained if that is entirely utilized?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's going to be, once we refine the concept and get a little better handle on, then we'll take it to that next level, and we'll have you, we'll have some general ideas when we come back in October.
Okay.
It'll begin at thirty thousand level feet is the mouth of the funnel, and we're working our way down. We'll have some generalities. We've already begun dialogue with some vendors and the vendor that actually did your C-five, your city park project.
Well, my concern, well, not necessarily a concern, but my interest is, would we need to utilize all of that, or just a portion of it, so that you're not totally tearing up everything if we don't need
Right.
that entire area for stormwater? So, if it were contained to the tennis and pickleball courts or the street or a parking lot or something like that, then we stop there.
You're absolutely, that's a great point and a great evaluation. We found that, and talking to Mr. Carlisle, I think he'd say, off the cuff, he would say, give me as much as I can get. We found that in looking at design and engineering on the Vets Park, we would like to have more so that we can take more off the streets. This is all part of the Center Street basin, so the more that we can take off your north-south streets before they go into your Center Street outfall, the better. But we have low ground or high groundwater, and we can only go so deep, so the more we can spread that volume out, because we can't go deeper, my gut is the better will be. But that's a good point, and we'll evaluate components of that.
I just had a question about this raised seating area that you have here. What would be the purpose of that?
We were thinking it's good for two different, two or three different reasons. One, it's consistency, because you have a lot of it at City Hall Plaza right here, adjacent to City Hall. So, when you have food vendors, you have a park, it's great for seating. It's great for somebody to come in, just get some food, go sit down for a while, and maybe you're a little more elderly and you need a place to just kind of sit down, and you're going to walk through a lot of the tents and vendors, the market, the farmer's market, but you need some casual seating, and so you always have that available. And the third thing is, you have a lot of kids. Some of our folks were here at Friday Fest, and they noticed all of the young families that are at Friday Fest running around. You kind of want a physical barrier, too, to kind of set that boundary. It's good to have a noise barrier, it's good to have a little bit of a, hey, Johnny, Susie, stay inside this, because you've got A-one-A not too far away. So, for a couple of those different reasons, we've had a couple of those low seat walls. And then I'll say, all of the options retain at least the mural wall that you see facing north. In this concept, what we're suggesting is to have some added restrooms, because right now, you have to either go to Nancy Hansen or somewhere else if you have Friday Fest or other event, so we're thinking that that could be used, then you could also have additional storage or some other things, and use the backside of that wall, retain the wall, and then build some kind of additional structure on the opposite side of that, and that's that organizing rectangle angle area you see there.
And that could be a beverage distribution point for like beer sales or something, a counter there
Right.
for people to, just a place for that to happen.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we gaining any parking with this plan? Where the food trucks are, would that be open for if there's a big event at the Cape Center, or, you know, sometimes we have overflow parking from here?
Right.
Would that be open there for parking?
It would, based on if you don't have a food truck event or whatever, where we've also explored going from Point Set, starting Point Set to the west to about midpoint of having on-street parking and be able to have still almost like a cul-de-sac at the middle of where you see, I mean, just beyond Nancy Hansen, so it would be basically right there, so that if it was just a smaller event, maybe it's a farmer's market and you didn't have the rest of the tents, could you at least do some on-street parking on either side of Taylor, still allow for them to be able to get turned around, so they're not going all the way out like Polk is right here, so that it's still blocked off to A-one-A, so you're not pulling in traffic from A-one-A, but it's neighborhood traffic. They can come there, park for events that may not, you know, maybe that's the way it sits day to day, and then you close off that street for major events and or activities. And then we've also added some on Fillmore with some parallel spots, and maybe we can fit in a couple of more, because I know that there's been some thoughts about, all right, the band musicians, they've got gear, they've got amps, they've got things, and so having some of those on that side, if that's the location we choose, so they can immediately get out, and maybe those are just roped off for special events, and then, yes, during time where those food trucks are, could be additional parking if we don't have major events.
And the, and the parking on Fillmore, is that, are you making the size of the park smaller to accommodate those cars, or are we, how are we getting that parking space?
We're eating into the current right-of-way, and we're stealing a little bit of repurposing of Fillmore. So, if we were to do that, you might take advantage of some lane reduction or some other right-of-way, and if we're going to take that out of commission, maybe that's where we do a targeted stormwater improvement within the road as well, so that you're going ahead and doing the stormwater improvements, and then if you're going to build it back, you might as well build it back to make sure that you're going to accommodate some additional parking.
Right. Thank you.
We're also suggesting a slight reorganization of the sheriff's parking area so that we have access only coming off Point Set, so that during times of a major events, we don't have confusion about getting onto Taylor or into that parking area. We're not reducing any spaces, we're just trying to create a better flow for, for that parking lot, especially for emergency vehicles, too. We're trying to clean up a little bit of that, make sure that they have access everywhere.
Thank you.
So...
Can you tell me a little bit about the play mounds? I'm assuming you mean these, correct?
Yes.
So...
Yeah, those, or on the other picture, you'll see on another page, it's this picture...
Councilmember Davis, what?
Right there.
What is it? What was the...
The play mounds.
Well, I want to know a little bit more about the play mounds, like what, how they...
You see this board back here with the rail? That's actually a park playground that we've done before, and, and again, we were struck by just attending Friday Fest.
Thank you.
Oh, it's Vanna, right on the ranch. Is that they, they are really secondary structures, and sometimes utilizing kids' minds is just as part of the act... And sometimes utilizing kids' minds is just as part of the activity that they need. These are actually playground structures, they can climb on these. But when they're not in use, it's like great artwork. And people of all ages use these mounds. Sometimes you can still have a yoga class, and you can utilize the mounds in a way that you can't with a playground. And so we were struck at trying to carve out a little bit of space, especially on the opposite side of the event lawn. A lot of times, parents might have some young kids that aren't engaged in what's playing, you know, in the band, and they're getting a little distracted, a little antsy, or a little, you know, the ADD kicks in a little bit. And so if you have something with some swings or some other areas where the parents can be watching, can be within earshot, but then they can also be visibly watching their kids, not on a playground per se, but on something that provides a little fun and a little activity, and is a part of an artwork that we think can be a part of a lot of these. We haven't mentioned as well, but there's many different things. We've talked with staff and our own team about ways to expand the park plaza with other features. Maybe it's a graphic or like a series of Easter egg hunts that is just a dot on the plaza, it's a circle, it's a thing, but it may represent the solar system. It may represent planets equidistant from certain areas that are connected. There's many venues, if you've been to Greenville, North, South Carolina, they have little mice, and you go find each of the little mice, and they're little bitty trinkets that come along the way. But it gets people exploring and walking at the same time. So it adds an element of community engagement to parks and your civic hub. And the same thing along that solar system, and you are Cape Canaveral, right? So there's this idea of exploration to other places that can be laid down very simply and suggested in certain materials to create those opportunities throughout the park. Hidden little gems that you come along and advise. Option B is the program elements, again, are very similar. And on this one, we explore, we wanted to explore some things to, you're either going to love it, or you're going to hate it. Because we were trying to see, okay, what if we freed up the center of where our food and vendors are? And even though the dog park is well-maintained, we thought we maybe take it out of the center of the park and move it to the very back. We didn't necessarily hear any comments that it, that it smelled air or whatever, but it was just trying to explore how that would shape the park. I don't think it's staff preference, I don't think it's our preference, but we wanted to see how that would look. So that's one of the major elements that is different. We also looked at the event center and the stage nestled up into the back of the mural, where the racquetball courts are, to prepare a, kind of a different feel for that event space. And again, I don't think that's necessarily our preference, because now the band may be pointing a little bit south and to the east, as opposed to pointing north and to the east, create a little bit better buffer. I like, we kind of explored some of the shapes and some of the things that, again, led to the idea of taking you through a path from City Hall to the civic hub, through the community space, and over into the event center. And this one, we actually explored removing three of the tennis courts or those pickleball courts. And I'll show you where those are going in concept after concept C2. And so that would remove at least three of the tennis courts and potentially six of the pickleball courts, and move them to C5 or your City Park just north. But again, similar elements of each of those are all in play. And then again, the potential underground stormwater areas to be evaluated, again, are highlighted in most of those areas. And then Councilmember Willis, we would evaluate again for the same option. Do we need it, or is it all applicable? And are we creating too much cost that we don't need just because of the stormwater improvement? And then option C is that same concept, very similar to concept A. And what we've done here is, we have moved, we've expanded more of that kid zone, those play mounds, that little more quiet space back on the southeast side. And we removed the pickleball courts, and we've moved them, and I'll quickly show you. We can get eight of those in the southern half or southern two-thirds of the open space at C5 or City Park. So we had six shown within the park on option A, but we can get eight if we're going to move them north to the park. The reason we've shown that in this option is our concept was, again, if we have available underground stormwater areas, and we're going to have to take up the underground, we're going to have to demolish the courts to do the underground stormwater improvements, then is this the best location? Is it somewhere, or we could easily have shown the tennis courts moving north and keeping the pickleball. It would really operate either differently, either way. We just thought the priority, based on the community and the public input, was more tennis, more pickleball courts was the higher public request. And there, basically, you can get two courts to one tennis court. So we can get eight up at City Park, as opposed to six onsite. But we could also move the two that we're showing on the plan and replace that with pickleball here or some other configuration. So for your math, I mean, you basically get two pickleball courts for every one tennis court. So again, option C is very similar in nature in almost all aspects to option A. And then we didn't walk through all of the character photos, and I won't necessarily walk through all of those. But you can see the idea for each of these, that starting in the upper left-hand corner, we want this park to be representative of the community and a place for the community to represent themselves as well. So sometimes having a little art wall that can be flexible, that can be a chalk wall, that can be a paint wall, that can be something that represents the community, like the mural itself. But they can also be community representative, so they can get down and represent themselves. And then again, Friday Fest, the tents, the market street, the activities, the ability to change it up, have flexibility are very important. You can see a couple more mounds and taking on a little bit of a different playful, even artistic view. And then lighting is going to be very important. We love festoon lighting, but there's other ways, not just festoon lighting. That's just mostly what people use. But there are some other ways to creatively do lighting. We've shown the swings there on the lower left of your picture there. Those actually light up, so that even at night, it kind of creates this playful feel. And maybe even your tree canopy, take advantage of the tree canopy that you have. Do some twinkle lights, do some moonlighting, do some uplighting, or even some lights, just wrap that up for holiday events or some other things. And that provides not only safety and security, but is really picturesque. And then the center picture is an idea of what we're talking about, an amphitheater, something that can be open-air. Does it necessarily need to have, you know, a large expense or an elevator? We think it would be best to be somewhat elevated, especially if you're going to have bands and people can really see. The idea on that one, if you kind of look in real closely, it has these panels that move and can play, because that one had a vista behind it. But that could be even art panels. You do art on the back, and then when the event isn't, you kind of move that around. And it's like this another element of some moving elements. Again, thinking about where you can dual-program an item that speaks to a lot of different of the goals and objectives for the site. Again, here's some more pictures of lighting. A potential gateway in the upper left would be at the western boundary of Taylor and right there at Point Set, something that may not have to go over the street, but it kind of conveys that idea of this is a civic hub point of location. And the kind of entry into the overall area. Any comments on those elements, where we are?
Counsel, any?
Lastly, just next steps. Again, this is the art wall that in all of the concepts, we think it's important. We think it's, we've used it as an organizing element. If you look, and we, in future concepts, we'll really show you how even the dimension and the width and length of the wall kind of relates to some other design features in the urban design that we have across the street. We're trying to relate back to that. It's a great Instagram moment, it's a great photo op moment. How can we enhance it with lighting? It's a great iconic element, even as you're driving on A1A and you pull back and you see that location. So we think we want to maintain that, at least we've shown that, unless we hear otherwise, in all of the options. And then we've used it on the backside to be repurposed, whether it's for food vendors, or for alcohol, or beverage sales, or restrooms, or some other things on the backside. So where we are with next steps, we were here today on the 19th, and tentatively based on your schedule, and we hope to garner comments and make some feedbacks, and then come back to you in October.
Hi, on option B, it looks like there is an exit to A1A to get the food trucks in. Is that correct?
No, we, well, that may show that in the graphic. But if you look at option A and option C, no. In all options, we would close it totally off, similar to Polk. That's our recommendation, unless...
No, that's what I was questioning. And then here, this option on B, looks like there would be less room for more for food trucks? Am I...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. On option A, we did have the food trucks going. I thought you were saying Taylor was closed off.
Oh, no.
Taylor was totally closed off, but we did have that as a location, just to kind of sidebar blend. We did have slightly less food truck area on option B, but more consolidated tent space, because we moved the dog park out and moved the pickleball out to C5.
And then this is, let me see. Okay, they all have the emergency access, okay.
Yes. But you're correct, I misspoke, you are correct. We did have that. After talking to staff and city manager, that may not be what our recommend. And I think that's one of the reasons why we recommended either A or C. And our preferred concept, I think staff's preferred concept, but I won't speak for them. But our preferred concept is probably A. But we're, I don't mean to presuppose, I'm just giving you my general opinion.
Thank you, it's appreciated.
Counsel, anymore?
I have another question. I know it will come down to the final say, but I'm looking ADA compliance. So all this, the bathrooms, I mean, even people to have access to the swings, to the stage, to wherever. So there would be ADA compliance?
You're lucky, we got a flat site. So yes, absolutely. ADA compliance, as we come from City Hall, work through the plaza all the way around. What we're proposing is in front of that plaza, the light green area, we're proposing some kind of synthetic turf. So you can have activities, you can even have a little, couple of little dancing and some other things going on there. And then underneath on that back half, where it's a different color green, underneath the oak trees, we would have more of a plant material or grass. But all of that ring, that oval that goes all the way around would be ADA compliant. So you can get to all those locations.
Yeah, and you could get in front of the stage and stuff.
Yes, yes. And synthetic turf, based on the pile height and other things, we still have ADA compliance on synthetic turf, too. Another reason we're proposing synthetic turf is because it's another sand, it acts as a sand filter. And so that's another reason why it's easy to do underground storage, because in normal circumstances, you use J drains, and they look a lot like it. They just don't hold the water onsite and have the largest volume underneath it.
My first priority is going to be the stormwater. And utilizing that anywhere and everywhere we can properly or adequately for the current situation and into the future. But my second would be the preparation of the site after the stormwater. And then that would give us the opportunity to add amenities over time. So that we're not looking at, we're not even considering this, well, I'm speaking for myself, considering this as a turnkey thing all in one fell swoop. This could extend out over time. If the, if the site is prepared properly, we have our priority items, like for Friday Fest, for closing the street, having the tents and the food trucks, and then a performance stage. Obviously, we're going to have to answer the pickleball issues right away, because that would be a revenue generator. But to add everything else, we could extend it out over however long we wanted to take. Is, would that be an issue?
No, if we do our proper planning.
Okay.
There are some slight different nuances if you have grass over the top of those storm chambers, as opposed to pickleball over those top. You have to reorganize the inlets and some of the other locations. But we can evaluate that now. With proper planning, it should absolutely work.
Right, but I mean, you have very nice display of all the things that are possible. You know, the swings, this, you know, all of that. But we may not need it right away. It may not, you know, we would like to be able to look at the utilization, how it changes. You know, are we getting increased traffic through there? Can we add more parking if needed, that type of thing? But to not go into it thinking that it is all going to be this one turnkey thing.
Right, understood.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. Where we're showing the pickleball courts at C5, you have shaded structures. Are you able to put those with the water, underground water? Are you able to put those structures in, or do they have to go to the...
We'll have to modify those existing underground structures, but they're a kit of parts. They're like Legos. So it would take a little bit to accommodate those footers for those structures. We're still going to have to accommodate them, because it's pervious grass over the top of them right now. We're going to put impervious pickleball courts. So we're going to have to move some of those structures. But the preliminary conversations we've had with the vendor, with the person that actually did the engineering on that project, it's highly possible, and not all that cost constrained.
So I was going to ask how much extra would it cost to do all that, but, okay.
Yeah, and it does, we would not be redoing all of it. It's basically leaving most of it in place and then creating some of those, because they're Legos, to a certain degree, underground. And we'll reroute those structures a little bit. And maybe we only need, because of that, maybe we push the shade structures to the very south, right? Because it doesn't occur right in the middle. We've shown it to optimize for planning, to have everybody have access, you know, to those. But maybe because of that, when we look at it and really evaluate, we do it in a different way. Or we just allow for them to have a tent, right? A little pop-up tent, bring their tent, have some shade.
Anything else, Counsel, this time?
Wes?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. As you've noticed, when you guys went to the Friday Fest, there's lots of kids. And I like these plans with the stage and the grass area, but I think there needs to be something more for kids, because we don't have the bounce houses anymore at the Friday Fest. And it's nice where, if you're there with your kids, you can listen to the band. And the playground would be close enough where you could see them and keep an eye on them. But they would have something to do besides terrorize their parents.
That's only when the angry English are playing, that's the name of the band.
So is, I like C. I like the idea of putting the pickleballs at it C5. So is, I like C, I like the idea of putting the pickleballs at at C5. You know, you showed pictures of ping pong, that would be a really cool thing to have out in the grass and, you know, while people are listening to music, playing ping pong. You know, we have bocce ball out at Banana River Park that never usually gets used, something like that there, with the lighting and everything, and then an area for kids to play. That's my concern. And I was wondering, what, what's your take on the stage being in that, in that corner with A1A right there? Are there enough trees to buffer the sound that, I mean, will the band have to play really loud?
Option C.
C.
I, I think that's why we've shown that in option C. I think we could still, if you even go back to option B, we've maybe illustrated it, I'm sorry, option A, in, in your packet, you should be able to see maybe a little wall that has some theming that goes along the frontage. But our thoughts were to maintain as much as that buffer to provide that sound barrier. We may be compromising the vista and the view in from the south, but I think it's ways in the higher advantage to create a better buffer from an A1A when you're playing. You know, from a band, from a protective location, pushing the kids to the playground or to that space, to the very, you know, western, eastern edge, where you have that in option C. And, and we, we would agree with you, and that's why option C, moving those pickleball out, whether pickleball goes to where the tennis courts are and the tennis courts go out, those we can work through. But that space between the mounds, that green space, the swings and the event lawn, was just that. All right, we've got more open space, flex open space, that we can have, you, we have a bounce house, do we bring in something? Do we have the cornhole? Do you have even something that is brought out and that is back in the storage areas for people to have that activity? They don't want to be standing up in front of the event, but they can be off to the back, hearing it in the background, doing cornhole, doing whatever ladder games, whatever yard games that may be, and a place for those kids to burn off a little energy.
Right.
And still be within the view shed of the parents.
Right.
Maybe we should consult our staff musical expert as to whether there would be any difficulty with the band shell type thing or stage near A1A.
I like the idea of having a couple parking spaces nearby. But usually, we turn it up to 11, so you can hear anything you need to hear.
As, as our stage exists now, near the sheriff's department. I live, like, on the river, and it's three, four blocks away. And I could hear the words from the bands right now. You know, like if I walk back at 10 o'clock, or, I mean, 9:30, whatever. And nobody has seen, we don't hear complaints about this at all. I think that people here know that that's Friday Fest, and I could hear it very clearly, but I don't think it's a problem.
Does it point, is it, it, it faces south, or does it, right, in the, in the stadium?
Yeah, it face, yeah, it faces south, that's correct.
Back by the basketball hoop on the building, and then it faces south.
And I, I might as well tell you what I, my opinion. I do like C, because I like the existing dog park to stay where it is, because we spent money on it, I don't see that to tear it up and put another dog park, and it's really a logical thing to do. And I like the tennis courts at C5 versus the pickleball courts, reason being, and if you look at the statistics on this, and I've been hearing it all over, and if you watch, the people in neighborhoods, in houses, do not like the sound of the pickleball. And there have been several complaints, people who live in golf course communities, whatever. And I'm hearing this constantly. However, we have no, I don't think we have any complaints. The people at Nancy Hansen and the people who play pickleball, and we haven't heard a whole lot of complaints from the people around that area. So, since it's compatible with the neighborhood, nobody's complaining a whole lot about it, I'd say keep pickleball at Nancy Hansen and put tennis courts someplace else. I don't care if it's C5 or someplace else, put tennis courts at C5 or one of our other parks, because it doesn't make the noise that you have. And I think noise would be a big problem, and I guarantee the people on Harrison would complain about the pickleball noise. Thank you.
Well, my wife plays pickleball and I play tennis, so we need couples therapy already, so, you know.
It's okay to play both.
I do, I do.
Anything else at this time, counsel? Scott, I think you're still got some ways to go through, or are we?
No, that was it.
Great.
Yes, that was it.
Well, thank you very much for going through that. That is really cool to see, there's some beautiful things in there that I think we, we're all working through today, counsel. I got a couple of public comment cards here, if you'd like, maybe we can go to public comment, and then Scott, as, might have to bring you and your team or city staff back up again. But thank you again very much. Any other questions, counsel, for KHA, Kim Lee Horn?
Not right now.
City manager, we're okay to go to public?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So the first card that I have here is Jane Seda, is, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Jane, if you don't mind, your name and your address?
Jane Seda, 609 Sherwood, 203 Cape Canaveral.
Thank you, hi.
Okay, I came because I'm excited, I play tennis. I have played pickleball, but I have to say, I prefer tennis. So I came because actually I have a tennis lesson every Saturday, standing lesson at 8:30. So I am well aware of the fact that we actually need more tennis courts than what we have, and more pickleboard, pickleball courts than what we have. And I don't think that any of these plans actually addresses the need for the tennis courts. It all just looks like we're, we want to strip them down to two courts. There's two tennis teams that actually call Cape Canaveral home right now, three, okay, I didn't know about the third. There's also leagues at night. We have a tennis pro, and he's really built up the tennis program. I also think, I mean, I looked at the Denver Act fix on the survey that they put out, and it shows that maybe the population of Cape Canaveral, most of the people might prefer pickleball due to the differences in the ages. But, I mean, there are a lot of people playing tennis. When I'm there, sometimes on Saturdays, and I'm there at 8:30, we could use all three courts, but we can't, because the pickleball people, well, we all know about the problems with the pickleball people on Saturdays. But the other issues that I see happening, which if we're planning something, we should definitely address, is I asked somebody if they would like to play at Nancy Hansen one evening this past week, and I was told no, because the bathrooms are not open. And it is true, if you're out there in the hot sun, like, and there's no bathroom facilities and you can't get a break from that at all, we need to put bathroom facilities. Like, if we're going to move the tennis courts or the pickleball courts, there needs to be bathroom facilities. Additionally, it would be nice if we could just pay for our court time when we get there. Because I think we've proven with this whole thing that's going on on Saturdays now, if you reserve a tennis court on Friday for Saturday, and there's nobody there to mediate between the pickleball people and the tennis people, what's going to happen is the police are going to start mediating. So when we're planning, I think we need to plan through all these different things. But we definitely need more tennis courts than just two courts. That's all.
Hey, Jane?
At least, at least four. I mean, five, if we could have all five that are over there as tennis right now, I think that would be very comfortable. It would, it would be nice, too, to have tennis and pickleball in the same location, then we could have, you could go pay for your court. But that doesn't seem like that could happen, given that there's definitely a family orientation to the new plan, so, and we have a lack of space. I don't know. I understand that. But I think you guys should go out there on a Saturday, see what's going on. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, yeah, opinion. Do you mind if I ask you a question? You said you play tennis?
Yes.
Good, thank you. So if I understand, you're, you're saying that the demand for pickleball is clearly there, we see that. But, you know, the, the data that we've seen, I think in the past, is, shows that pickleball's there. But tennis would, would increase if capacity could increase, and it's really this competitiveness between the two sports with limited space. And the second question was, is it a good idea to isolate them, as you had kind of alluded to at the end, of whether that was a good idea or not? And I think that's what option C does.
Right, so, there are some people that have said that they, and I can see this, that there is an opportunity for us as a community to be like a racket center. Like, if we had enough pickleball courts and enough tennis courts at the same location, this would be like a hub. But I don't know that we have enough space, like, as a community. I also do know that we need to have bathroom facilities, like, so that would simplify that, if we had that going on. But I think that, I mean, I've been taking tennis lessons since I moved in here in November, and from what I can see, the use of tennis courts is just continuing to grow. And now it's going to happen when we have everybody back in town for the winter, we're going to really see, I think, where we are.
Agreed, thank you again. Any other questions for Jane, if you're willing to answer? Appreciate it.
I, I just want to clarify this. I have never met Jane, and I, so don't think that I brought Jane here, but I have been, thank you so much, Jane, and I'm so pleased to meet you. I'm a tennis player, I started when I was 26, I've been playing over almost 40, 50 years. And we've always had a very, very great tennis community here in Cape Canaveral for about 45, 50 years. And things during the pandemic is when people started playing pickleball. And it's, I think it's also difficult, some of us do not know for sure if pickleball is a fad or if it's here to stay. We'll see. I hear that they're thinking about making it an Olympic sport. I do keep up with this, but I have never met Jane before, so honestly, and Jane, could you verify that?
I'm on the business.
I've never met Jane.
No, but I'm on the Business and Economic Development Council.
Okay, so, oh, yes, so that you did come through. Sorry, Jane. I thought that, I thought I recognized you, but then I thought, I don't think I've met Jane on the tennis court, so I don't know Jane. But, and we do really like our very.
I haven't spoken before about this.
Okay, wonderful. And we do really like our new pro named Peter, and he's doing a great job. In fact, this week, I shared with our city manager that the people are coming over from the USTA Cocoa Beach facility to take lessons from Peter. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel member Willis?
Well, just to point out that Kim Lee Horn has proposed restroom facilities being added, so, you know, that, it's, it's on all the maps, so.
All right, good, thank you.
It was thought of.
Appreciate your input, participation, thank you. Okay, the next card I have is Dr. Shannon Roberts. You did not write doctor, but I, happy to see you, how are you doing?
Good to see you. I'm.
Did you realize that you were in one of the photos? Did you, I know you were looking down, but I wanted to point out that you were in one of the photos for the last workshop.
Oh, well, thank you so much. Well, we appreciate your having these workshops, very appreciated. The concerns I've got are dealing with the overall area, and you all have been speaking about this. One is lighting, you know, when you attend Friday Fest, which is one of the, obviously around the hub, the lighting, at least when you're on the east, coming in, if you're parking from the east coming in towards Friday Fest, the lighting is extremely poor, very dangerous, and I just wanted to bring that attention to the council as well, and it's the sidewalks, again, it's the arteries that are coming into the civic hub area that, in my opinion, are really unsafe. The, if you've got a mobility device, which I have had, and I'm, now, it's not easy to come to Friday Fest anymore just because of that. If you take a mobility device and then try to walk safely on the sidewalks, dipping down into Pointcetta, for example, you know, it's very dangerous. So I'm just mentioning the tripping hazards everywhere, so, not only for those with a device, but I think also for just people walking. Handicapped access, you all brought up that. And what I can see, and we brought this up, you know, we had the, the engagement meetings, is very limited, even now, it's just not, it's just not sufficient, in my opinion, to where we may be disengaging some of the elderly population that might ordinarily be there. The, let's see, I'm just trying to make sure I get all this seating. Again, if you needed to see, it said there's insufficient seating, and I'm going now by our current experience. And I know that we're proposing, you know, improvements in that way, and that's very appreciated. And, let's see, so sorry, the stormwater point that you brought up, I, I know at one time we talked about a water feature that would have blended, you know, the desirability of the aesthetics of the community with the stormwater needs. And I would like to go back to council member Willis's suggestion that we focus on that. In, in my opinion, it could be a, an aesthetic appeal, if we did something that had a fountain. I know we have to be careful about safety, but I do think that there's a way to accentuate, you know, the stormwater concerns with maybe something that would be pleasant to be around, but still be safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Roberts, if you don't mind, can I ask you a question? If you're okay with that? When you were talking, you had spoke the, the lighting issue along the, I think, north and south Pointcetta, I think it was a few meetings ago.
Also on Taylor, you know, when you keep going east on Taylor, that's, you know, a lot of the residents park, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Wes, I'm.
No.
But the parking, you know, a lot of people park over there near the Union Building, and that is so dark, and it is so unsafe. And again, this brings up something we've talked about in the past, is the acquisition of additional land in order to accommodate the parking needs of our community. When we access the civic hub, those arteries are critical to enabling the community to actually come into the civic hub safely. And at night in particular, during Friday Fest, it is so hard, number one, to safely park, because it's so dark in that area, and also there's insufficient parking, dramatically insufficient parking, because people park in everywhere, and it truly is an accident waiting to happen, either hitting a person, hitting a vehicle, something along that line. So again, I know in the past we've considered acquiring additional land, but I just really think it's something to consider for the city, to take advantage of this opportunity to acquire around the civic hub to allow for sufficient parking and safety and accessibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel member Willis?
Well, I just wondered if, for Kim Lee Horn, if they could possibly highlight in further, you know, future renderings, handicap parking, specifically how close we could get that to the center of the civic hub. And also, let's clarify what we can, can and can't use as far as parking around the Cape Center as well, and access to the civic hub. That would be additional parking that we're, we're not looking at right now.
Except for what the sheriff's department would be using.
All of.
Well, that's kind of one kind of area for parking, but the sheriff's department will probably need to have designated spaces for sheriff's department vehicles, but yes, sir, the rest of the Cape Center could potentially be available.
Okay.
How many vehicles do they need to park?
Commander Keck?
I'm curious.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
I don't have, I know we had a meeting, discussed that, Todd, but I don't, number off the top, it kind of varies depending upon if we, if we get some people out, that we have their vehicles there, because we require them, if they're going on vacation, to park their vehicles at the precinct as opposed to leaving them at the house, whatnot. But I know right now we've got four dedicated on the lot just to the south, or four or five, and that's, that's more than enough. I mean, very, very seldom do we have that many over there, so I know we had talked, I think, about being able to cut a couple of those out specifically for us if need be.
And another thing about all of these three options that I've seen, the Friday Fest has been pulled off of Pointcetta, which means the parking on the east of the precinct could now become more available for your use as well.
And as, and as long as the libraries over there, I know we talked about, we could park right across the street from the library, too, to kind of help with, you know, opening up some additional spots or other, other places, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else at this time, council? Okay, so, I'm sorry, I also got another public comment card here. It's Kay Jackson. Hey, Kay, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. I loved the conversation, because I think that we've got a good focus on stormwater, which we all are happy about. I like the fact that we are looking at what is in demand, and that's more or less what I came up to discuss. Because I see a lot of things, and we do need to accommodate for children, and maybe the demographic at Friday Fest has changed since I've been able to get up there. But I know that with Capeview Elementary, our elementary school's attendance has dropped 34% in five years. So as I see some of the suggestions, I just wanted to make a comment for consideration for the council on making sure we have a nice blend, because we do have an older demographic here, as we've had for a while. We've had a lot of new families move in. And I personally, as a citizen, want to make sure that if we're spending money on projects like this, that we're spending it on the things that people want. And pickleball and tennis, that's in demand. I know I've heard that myself. The school population at Capeview has dropped. So the big, huge children's areas, I might look at different alternatives to keep those kids busy while they're with their families. I haven't looked at the population numbers for Cocoa Beach, which part of our children go down there. So our drop could have been from them graduating and going to, to high school down there. But as I look at some of these things, particularly, and I'm just getting caught up on this, because I had a lot of things that happened last year, wasn't even here a lot of the, for the hearings. But those white swings with the, I mean, I see our demographic that I've seen at Friday Fest, I don't see a whole bunch of people in that type of swing. So, you know, just giving some feedback of things I've noticed over the years of going. But I love the discussion that's happening, because I think that's what makes the city provide a better environment for all of us. And that part, I'm really happy about. I'm happy to hear about the storm system. Now, one question I had on the storm system, as I look at the different examples, that's just a question that I have. Okay, I heard, what's, Ken, I haven't gotten to be in the rest of your meetings, but I heard it's a big Lego system. So what happens when the Lego breaks? Because if we have all these things on top of it, we have to bust that up to repair that. And so what kind of financial impact does that have for citizens going forward, based on where we're putting it? Is a question that I would like to see answered, because that, to me, becomes a decision-making tool for the council, as far as looking at what they might desire for the build-out of, as we look at these. And the parking is another thing. I hate to see any parking go away, because that's one thing that's always a challenge with Friday Fest. So.
Thank you.
I ran out of time, I'm sorry.
And just to make sure I understand your questions, the key, the financial impacts of the stormwater?
Well, of the long-term maintenance on the stormwater system. Because, as we all know, I had a, I've had, I've had pools in Florida, and if you have above-ground PVC, even above ground, but below as well on pipes, you can end up with water wiggles and washouts, once, once it's been exposed to the environment for a certain amount of time here in our subtropical climate. So if that's under a tennis court, what is our cost now going to be compared to when we think the lifetime of that Lego is, is out there? Because our costs right now in our world, period, are off the charts going up. What we could buy a year ago at a certain price is now, forget it, it's just off the charts with inflation. So as we look at what we're putting on top of those systems that are key and instrumental to our citizens to keeping the water out of their houses, I think we need to look at the cost of that maintenance, long-term, because of the fact that we are in the environment we're in, you know?
Thank you. That, I just wanted to clarify the first one. The second one I got, which was in regards to parking. Thank you, Kay. We'll work through those questions up here as well.
I just wanted to bring those things up, and thank you. I'm sorry I exceeded my time.
No, that's okay. We were all going back and forth, and if anyone from the public, Scott and I talked prior, if there's anything that comes to mind, and I mean, assuming council's okay, we can certainly come back up and work through it. This is a workshop, and it's designed to be more informal, but I want to stay on schedule. We're at 7:16 PM. That's all the public comment cards that I have at this time. So if there's not anyone else, show of hands, anyone want to speak at this time? And if we need to go back, we can, for ones and twos, but I just want to go ahead and formally close public hearing and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Willis?
Well, to Ms. Jackson's point, there, there are other alternatives, because Zach and Lexi and I went and, went and toured in Cape Canaveral, I mean, in Cocoa Beach, under the Surf Company. And the vaults are concrete, and they built the hotel on top of it. So there are other options that are more durable than the plastic chambers. So it's going to be addressed, I'm sure. Tim Carlisle and Kim Lee Horn will be, be looking at that. So it, I'm not sure, but I think the concrete is probably a little more cost-effective on, on what you get for that, but-
What is the useful life of the concrete structures? Fifty, 100 years?
We can certainly get you all of that data, and that's what I was just gonna say.
Okay, I'm sorry.
To that same, to that same point, no, no, thank, thank you for your clarification, and thank you for your, your points. Sometimes we use terminology to give you an idea of the flexibility of nature, but there, but make, have any concerns, they're highly engineered systems, and we certainly do vaults underneath major structures, major parking garages and other things, so they can be well-equipped for the more, even more so the life expectancy of your tennis court or your asphalt structure, or whatever the structure, like anything.
Well, the way I understood the question was that the Lego breaks. It wasn't that it's going to break, it's more about the operations and maintenance. And if that's not what it was intended, it is a good question. The ongoing O and M for the plastic exfiltration structures, we don't really know. I guess we're like eight years into that, it seems like 10 years ago, when they, no, not that long.
Six, for your city park system?
Tim, do you remember how long ago that was put in exfiltration at the city park?
It was only in 15, it started in 15, I think, Tim, didn't it? 15 and 16? 16, it finalized, it was the last of 16, maybe 17.
And, and the, you know, the equipment used, the ongoing, just like we service, I don't know when we're expected to go back to, to, to check and inspect that.
They have regular maintenance requirements, and they're domed structures, so you can actually get through and clean out the, you know, the, the other things that are actually, they're used to filter out, so you can get to those access points.
Thank you.
Yeah. But it's highly, it's, the term Legos and/or plastic, it's the same material, even in your stormwater system pipes. So it's, it's basically the same material to say that your stormwater system needs maintenance, your waterline system needs maintenance. It's the same materiality that is, is being used in those instances.
Thank you. Was there anything else at this time on your side? What I'd like to do is propose, if we take a, a quick break, if that's okay? And I encourage you to all maybe mingle, mix, and take a look at anything over here. We can collaborate one-on-ones and engage, if you'd be willing. Anyone, how long do you want to take? I'm thinking at least maybe 15 minutes would be okay, and then we can reconvene and try to-
Well, if it's gonna be, how long do you think that we need to talk about?
Well, it's-
I mean, when we finish it, and then just call?
I got some questions. I haven't asked really any questions.
We need to take a break.
Yes, please. Okay, so if that's okay, we're at 7:20 PM now, according to this. Let's take at least a break to 7:30, 7:35. We can kind of reconvene at least 10 minutes, and, and we'll be here. So, yes, we'll recess now and come back then. Thank you. Thank you. If it's convenient, if not, that's okay.
I can get there quickly. Yes, sir. That's generally the schedule that we've been looking at. But probably that draft master plan, based on tonight's input, I think if I can get, we can get a little bit more clarity, a little bit more consensus. I know it's kind of organized consensus, but general consensus. Then I think we can bring back the next plan at that October meeting with some slight options. Because that's what I'm hearing everybody talk about, just a couple of nuances. I think we've landed a little bit on A and C. And then how we take out some of those other kit of parts and maybe look at pickleball or tennis out or tennis and maneuver a couple of those around. So that when we come back on October 17th, you'll be able to have a clear picture with, yes, I like this one or this one as opposed to, you know, three different options right now. So, but yes, by the 17th and then at the 17th, we can come with an opinion or probable cost and some other information based on stormwater, based on some other things that will allow you to weigh in on the choice of this because of also maybe some cost.
Okay, thank you. That was my next question. So to date, we haven't really got into cost or estimates. But October 17th is a time when you'll have enough information to at least have some conceptual idea.
Right.
And that, so the materials, providing KHA with the necessary information to finalize conceptual materials, it really, once you know how to spec the materials and the labor around it, we can then understand what the civic hub would cost to roll out?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll do some what we call an opinion or probable cost, but it's a rough order magnitude of cost, a ROM or something that would be, what are all the bricks and mortar and construction materials? And then we'll also give you a soft cost based on those hard costs for total turnkey of what it's going to take to design that, permit that associated. And those are generally around percentages that we have a good idea on. And so we'll give you some kind of big bucket items of each of the elements that you see that make up each plan.
Thank you. And there may not be, and obviously not the basic operational city services, but any big O and M ongoing costs in five, 10, 15 years, will that be included in the analysis if that's relevant or needed?
That's, that's not, that's not something that's in our bailiwick, that's not in our strength, but we'll work with staff and maybe even some others to look at any of those. We can give you the parameters, like there are some concerns about stormwater. Well, there's maintenance that has to be done every 10, 15 years, every so often. So we can kind of give you those parameters, what are the specifications on what this would be. That's the same with the parking lot or a tennis court. I mean, you know, you have to resurface a tennis court over time, you have to resurface a parking lot over time. And so we can kind of give you those parameters of what that would look like. But most of your other facilities, you know, are going to be there. And we're going to look at materials that are durable in this environment. You're right. So we need to be concerned about concrete and steel at sometimes because steel rusts. And so we got to be careful about that. Yes, concrete is pretty good. So some of those materials, we need to be consider of your environment here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Willis, if you don't mind, you were saying something that I want to make sure I understand. You were talking about, maybe wrong word, but sort of like a phased project approach? Is that?
Yeah, we would take, my thought was that let's take the absolute essentials, things we really have to have addressing stormwater adequately for whatever growth we might have that would need more if we, if that's appropriate. And then the absolute minimum things we need in order to make this a start on a civic hub for Friday Fest, for a performance stage, that type of thing, and addressing pickleball and/or tennis courts. Obviously, we'd need restroom facilities. And I would imagine we would need to initially address the racquetball facility and how we're going to utilize that, if that's where the restrooms would be. And beyond that, we go in a phased approach over years. I mean, if people come and they realize, all right, we need this type of thing here, where we, where we're looking at a, the raised seating area, if you will, or a relocation of the dog park or something like that, that could happen in subsequent years, subsequent budgets, you know? And it's going, I'm sure it's going to take us a good while to even get to that minimum stage. But it's not something we have to do it all at one time. And we may not, as the point was made about the swings, yeah, I don't see me getting on one, but.
We all want our picture of the.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, if you could have seen me try to crawl down into that storm vault, you know, no. But, you know, I just see it as being something that we ultimately reach that goal over years, not immediately, so.
Well, it reminds me of what we did at the, where the C5 is, that entire parcel. That's been a multi-phase project that when Councilmember, Mayor for Tim Raymond and I took office, was really kind of beginning to break ground. And I think we're starting to see this year's budget reflect some of those final steps. But it did start with stormwater, interesting, which makes sense, subsurface, upgrade. And if I understood you earlier, Scott, you were talking about in response to that, you know, with proper planning, we could do that. And so the decisions that we know above ground today are important to optimize stormwater. If we sort of just prioritize trees today, do we have any, like, comparisons of the quantity losses between the important features of these sites? Sort of between the options, racquetball is sort of a number as an example, is today we have two racquetball courts, four? Four? And so this, all these proposed plans would take it to?
Zero.
Zero. And do we have, we had any discussions on whether or not we were, no, it's fine, just in other places in the city, will there will replace racquetball?
Our plans have not considered that, the public input, the anecdotal information that we've got from park and recs and how much has been reserved and how much has it been used was very minimal. And so that was the information that we got to came to the conclusion to say, okay, we can repurpose that for locations. Same with the shuffleboard courts. We're not replacing the shuffleboard courts, we're taking them out for the main hit civic hub component. But all of the major trees, we haven't done a species analysis necessarily and an arborist or anything like that, we had that on staff, but we haven't gone to that level to say, oh, but we have just taken for blanket, we're going to try to keep all of the major tree and canopy because shade is very important. And so we're trying to work in those locations in and around those trees. And that's why we've shown, every exhibit that we've shown, we've tried to carve out, trying to say, okay, that's not eligible because we want to save some of those tree and those canopies. And those two don't go well together, obviously, you know, tree roots grow and can create some things, so we have to accommodate that.
And so just understanding the trade-offs. So to, from the existing today, we have four operating racquetball courts. All the proposals would be zero. And so today we have how many shuffleboard?
About 10.
About 10, and it would go to essentially zero. And then, and it's not more about why are we doing it, it's more about just knowing the trade-offs, what, what's the impacts going to be? Going back to this C5 facility, this council was faced with some tough decisions on trees, one of the controversial tree, a few trees. One, one tree was more emotional than the others, but either way, we got through it. And it was a, it was one of those things that where, when the original designs, just like this conceptual, were sort of approved, it was difficult going back in time, going through the P and Z notes to see existing today. You just, we just looked at the new, just like we're doing tonight all day. And I understand the layer helps, but to quantify it, you know, counting trees in the pictures, is there any chart or table that shows existing versus these options, at least at a high level, on what's going to be added and or, and then the opposite? What doesn't exist today? We are seeing a lot of those things, pretty much, almost everything down the list, a lot of new amenities. We know stormwater today is zero. And I guess that's one of my final questions in as far as the numbers go is, who is going to calculate the, the total stormwater impact? Is that KHA? Okay. And the guiding document that we use for our stormwater that prioritizes citywide at large is that, what is that document, if you don't mind me?
The Stormwater Map?
Stormwater, was it the facilities plan, there was the Center Street basin?
Yeah, you're talking about for the TMDLs to be up to date? I think it was a 15-year analysis.
And then the plan that we received to accomplish those goals is, what plan is that? Is that our facility? The Mead and Hunt?
It's the BMAP, the Basin Management Action Plan is what it's called.
So is, I mean, that's the guiding document that we're using today and fulfilling as?
You know, I actually sat down today and looked at it. It's funny that you bring that up because we were looking through today and some things have changed, more new projects have come up like this project here. So when a project comes up or anything changes, of course, you're going to have more options to put more stormwater into the ground or do something different with swales or dry retention areas. So this particular project was not in our BMAP. So it's, it's something new that we've discovered in the last, what, two years? So if we redo the BMAP, of course, that project's going to be in there if the civic hub's not done yet. So, yes.
And that was my hope was to, to know that that analysis, the Mead and Hunt is the document to hit these state, I think, required goals. And we're moving in that direction. This will, any stormwater is going to help it. And something I've said along the way is, looking at the city at large, and this is my feedback to KHA and to everyone, is that we got here by a majority council vote of 3-2. So I accept this, the task tonight is a, is a good task. It's to dig into the design and I'm not here to, there's some beautiful things that I hope happens in here, many of them I love, I have no issues with that. But the stormwater piece I want to be careful with because I do just, I want to see the flooding fixed and. and to rely on those documents is our best path to get there. You know, they were prioritized, some steps in there. And so it would be my hope, if not already, that we do bring those together and see where this stormwater project falls on the priority. Now, that may not change, if it, just say it's dead last. It doesn't, I'm not saying that we still can do stormwater and we should do stormwater. I'm just saying, then if we fund it, we want to make sure we're, we have enough funds to handle the higher priority projects first. And so when we get to these cost estimates in October, being able to break the project out into a stormwater phase one with minimal amenities that does not cause disruption to the public from the existing uses today, like you said, Mayor Pro Tim, we have a dog park, we've got existing tennis courts, and making those improvements along the way is the right way to do it, in my opinion. But I want to know the quantity, the trade-offs between the gallons we're going to avoid dumping into the river and then the costs to the project. I'm looking forward to that because that's really one variable, but variable, but it's an important one on just discussing the economic trade-offs of this project within the ABC options within this parcel. But then we're, we are looking at the trade-offs kind of at least in the Center Street basin at large part of the city. And that's where I think all of our heart is. I think we all want to see this resolved. And so I want to work together and see the improvements without disrupting as many trees as possible. I didn't unfortunately get a chance to go to the first workshop, but I do appreciate this process too, being in two of three presentations showing where we are. And so no way am I saying I don't think we should have costs today, but I'm looking forward to seeing that. And so my hope is we do give you the feedback you need. One thing I will say right off the bat is the C5, as Mayor Pro Tim Raymond alluded to, being the home of pickleball, that's new information to me, of course, that's been brought up and I was not at that workshop. But those neighbors around there I know well, and I think we all, their vote, the city staff engages with them often. And I think my question is, what are we going to do about pickleball? If there is tension, is there tension strong enough in that area where we would say to ourselves, we're not going to do pickleball in the C5? And if that's the case, do we have other options in the city other than here? Because I do see the benefits of separating. I do like, you know, improve, maybe shrinking the quantity of tennis courts to improve the quality of tennis court, to the clay. But the, the pickleball, the pickleball is occupying the C5 today indoors temporarily. They certainly occupy and compete for space. And really, that's it. That's, there's the only two places, right, where we're seeing pickleball. Nancy Hansen, it and a little bit in the C5. So if we take that away with the expectation that we're going to get this, my thought is, what if we find that, you know, don't want to get the cart in front of the horse? Make sure we got a home for pickleball before we start driving forward with C, C5. Because we love our pickleball, we love our tennis players, it's a huge part of this community. Tennis did rule the day here for many years. And still today, I know the demand's there. I don't think either one of them are going anywhere. So if we can expand and meet that demand, I think that's one of the bigger challenges in deciding these plans is, if there is a mini elephant in the room, that's the one. So those are my comments on the pickleball amphitheater. I'm indifferent. You know, I think the corner with the sound projecting in is fine. Those things were discussed in the early Vision days, amphitheater. You can go back and see where those were things that people wanted. And I think this is our only A1A. I mean, obviously, City Hall parcel, but really outside the campus right here, that's all our property that we have on A1A.
Right.
And so my thought was, did we look at, and I'll stop right here, going, I'll be careful when I say this, vertical with parking, maybe two stories, three, or does that just not make sense? And without using up too much valuable land going under stormwater and maybe kind of consolidating the vehicles so that we can have more green space and amenities?
We're doing a structured parking with underground storage, but it's, it can be cost prohibitive because your land is not such that it's so valuable that the land cost can't be accommodated at the surface level at a cost that is a lot less than structured parking or vertical structured parking decks.
You're saying the cost to just keep it surface level by acquiring more property is?
Or on-street parking, repurposing a lane, maybe doing a one-way pair with some other streets so you can repurpose one of those lanes and have it on grade, have some on-street parking, parallel parking. I should have checked with my partners that are actually doing some analysis of some one-way pairs through the presidential streets analysis. So maybe there's a lane reduction in some of those areas and you add on-street parking because that's right-of-way you already have, that's land you already have, and it's not more land that you're having to buy. In most cases and most urban conditions, as a rule of thumb, and I'm a planner and landscape architect, but I've worked with a lot of engineers, if your land isn't more than a million dollars an acre, then you're, it's not necessarily cost-effective to go vertical. Because you can free up that land or you can just park on it, you know, in the surface. But if you can free up that land in a million acre, then I can build that structured park and cover the cost because now I've got a more valuable piece of land. I can sell to a retailer, I can sell to somebody, or I can sell or repurpose that land. But that's just anecdotal. I think in this instance, your better option would be to evaluate repurposing some one-way pairs or some lanes in your current right-of-way. Let's repurpose the roadway that you have within the right-of-way, do on-street parking in some of those areas. Because that's what, you're looking at a shoulder opportunity or events in pickleball or tennis. You're not talking about thousands of cars that you need to put off-street or hundreds of cars that, you know, you've got, you've got your rights of way to use.
The other thing that I want to bring up, the parking garage in Cocoa Beach, they paid a lot of money, millions. And when I asked the question, when would they see a profit? They told me the profit would not be available until 15 years later from the time that they built it. So I agree with you, sir, that it's better to look at other options. And again, we have a situation such as Ellie Mays, where a lot of people who come to Friday Fest and activities, they ride a bicycle or they walk. And I know I ride my bike to Nancy Hansen for tennis twice a week. And if I do anything else, it's always on the bike. I come to City Hall during the day on a bike. And I know people, it's the same type of idea that we walk to Friday Fest. Thank you.
Mayor, I will address one question. This is a kind of a good picture to see where the existing canopy. When you look at the plans, the larger tree, the circles that are depicted there, and then when you look at the potential underground, the white area, is showing where all of that existing canopy tree is and would remain. So all of the larger trees, we are saying would remain. So in your, your analysis of what stays and what goes, in all of the two options that we're showing, they would keep all of the significant canopy. Now we got to figure out, does it make sense with those trees, especially right there in the middle of the event lawn? Do we save those? Because that would really make our stormwater area in that area inefficient and we're not getting our cost benefit analysis out of that area. So that would be something that we would kind of have to evaluate. Right now, we're saying, boy, that's synthetic turf. We could really do some underground stormwater. And that's, we're going to work through a little bit of that funnel of analysis. Right now, we know it's a constraint and we're going to have to dive in and look at a little of that analysis to give you a better opinion about that. Does that answer your question?
It does. And the, just to make sure, is there an example of what it looks like when a tree is being removed on here? Would I?
Any of the major canopy trees are not being removed?
And how are we defining major canopy tree? Are we talking about like the specimen with the 25-inch diameter?
Anything over eight inches, I think we've left. I mean.
So.
So 100% of the live oaks would remain?
And let me caveat on that. I mean, we haven't done the analysis for the critical root growth for the tree based on the stormwater analysis, but our intent is to preserve all of the major canopy. Right now, we're only showing removing palms. All of the oak trees would remain.
The oaks are the issue. Do we know the square footage? Is this the most optimal stormwater option, this one that we're looking at together? Does this provide, or the greatest?
A or C, both. I mean.
What, do we know which one's larger or if it's insignificant?
No, we don't know necessarily. But the things that we're contemplating, whether it's C, where we have an extended, you know, kid play area that you can put a bounce house on or a pickleball court, you're still only at the surface level. We're not doing a structure that has a footer, a lot of times major light poles, even when we do storm chambers underground, underneath parking lots. The biggest issue we have is code-required trees in the planter islands and light poles to meet footometrics. But we still can accommodate that and move those in and around those areas. So I think either one, it probably looks like the, you know, option A with the pickleball has a little bit larger, you know, surface area and footprint without trees.
Scott, I believe you mentioned earlier that you could also look at opportunities for stormwater vaults that are not shown here on Pointcetta and?
Fillmore.
Fillmore.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And I strongly suggest that because, I mean, we need to look at a little of the engineering. We need to look at the analysis. We're currently doing that for you on Vets Park for the rain garden project that's currently. So we're trying to take some off of Taylor. And we've even analyzed and made Mr. Carlisle get out there in the rain and give us some his interpretation on how we can look at where those drainage basins are so we can pull more stormwater off of the site, off the back of the library parking lot area and pull that in and then treat that in the volume of the Vets Park. And we were trying to take some more off Orange Avenue and filter that into it. So I don't think we're going to be able to get there in that regard. And we've given you input and feedback on that. But that's when we get into that level of design, we can really try to pull in Fillmore, Pointcetta. But we also know that the main trunk line goes down Orange Avenue for that Center Street basin to the outfall.
If I can add just real quickly, as, and I was talking earlier about this, as technology advances, which we all know it advances really quickly these days, they come up with great new ideas. And one of the new things now Scott was mentioning about the domes that we have under the baseball fields out there, we have looked at different things. I actually brought this down from upstairs. This is what's, it's called Stormtrap. And speaking of Legos, you know, it's a little Lego set. It actually builds in foot increments. So if you have, let's say, on a wet weather day or season, you're hitting, what, five feet, four feet? Then you know that you can go down a certain amount of feet and still percolate into the earth from what you trap into this system. So it's not just the domes that we can look at. There are different systems for underground that these are, I believe, made out of concrete, aren't they? These are the concrete systems that you can literally build in stages. Like you can go one foot deep, you can go four foot deep, you can go eight foot deep. So as you, and I know you were mentioning, how much volume can we take in this area? Which one can get the most volume? Kind of echo that, we won't know until I believe they start doing their borings to find out where that wet table is. And then we can start piecing something like this together and get a mass quantity of volume. I believe me and Zach had put some numbers together not too long ago for just the tennis court area. And I think, I want to say that we went down roughly two feet with these chambers, and it was 770,000 gallons. And that was just on the tennis ball court, the tennis and pickleball courts. So depending on that depth, that will help us understand exactly how much and the quantity of stormwater that we'll be able to take on in that area. Does that help a little bit with understanding?
And the, that technology is, is that different than what's, that's an improved technology than what we're using at C5?
Absolutely, yeah. You can put more weight on these. So I know that Councilmember Willis was mentioning, I'm sorry, my mind's racing. Councilmember Willis had mentioned that there's a parking garage on top of these. So you can literally build houses on top of them. You could, you could drive on top of them.
Perfect. Well, there you go, you just answered my question. So that I was assuming that the closing of Taylor Avenue, we were able to do stormwater because we were not going to drive on it, which certainly helps. But this would be, it could handle the load?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, well, that's a game changer because we're going to need to repave roads at some point. Theoretically, are cities going under their road grid?
Yes. We've talked about that, yes. There's a lot of different scenarios and I won't get into the details of the presidential roads, but we're looking at pervious pavers, we're looking at pervious concrete, we're looking at underground chambers. There's a lot of different things now. And on top of that, I wanted to mention that they have a new way of cleaning out these systems that consist of just a manhole in the middle of certain areas of the system where you can just go in there and you can clean them out and maintain them, which is actually very cost-effective.
So low O and M?
Very, very low O and M.
Okay, well, that's very interesting. Because, you know, there's two projects. There's the stormwater project, there's the civic hub project. The motivation to do a civic hub project, whether a stormwater project happens or not, I think, is here, right? The park wants to be improved. I think we, there's a priority on stormwater. And all I've been trying to say is, if this site is not the site for stormwater, let's not try to, let's try to knock it out of the park and do it. But when we see those radius rings around, as you were saying, Scott, and the roots and the canopy area, you know, that area, there might be some good opportunities, but to make it that, if it doesn't work out, we don't need to jam it, knowing that potentially road, which might have another set of issues. But I would like to explore this road idea and especially if any other cities have done it because that's another conversation. But for tonight, council hoping to give Kim Lee-Horm the feedback. I've, just if you don't mind, I want to go down and say this, the data, I want to thank you as well for holding and sharing the data. Would I be able to see, is there any other questions or data that was asked in the package that the council, that we could see? Does it break it down even further? Because I think it was 100 something or 85.
The public survey?
Yes.
Yes, we can give you, matter of fact, Molly and your public information officer actually constructed and has all of that survey information, correct?
Because I was hoping to learn a little bit more about it. Yes, so the, the hope would be, we asked, like, the banner screenshot you shared, statistic most important is who lives here. And that was important. But was the, any of the council members here at that workshop? Or this data was collected exclusively online or was it hybrid between physical?
That report out data was all online, but we also took some data from, I believe, most of the other council members. of the other council members were there.
So this data was, was not factoring the additional?
Correct.
So the survey data was ran online over a period of time, I remember. And the, the data that I, was, is there any, is there any more demographic data beyond what we have here? Or was this a hundred percent of the questions? Like, going back to the 2018 survey, there was some more data that would help kind of break down. Yeah, the, the report. That's what I'm trying to.
I can give you like the individual responses from every person that responded, like literally the individual responses of a hundred and eleven people.
Well, I think we have these responses, seventy-three in here, or no, a hundred. Is there? You're talking about something that's not in here?
Well, there's three different ways you can print out data from Survey Monkey.
Okay.
This has the most digestible format. I'll be honest, me and Daniel cringe a little bit when I give you guys survey data because it can sometimes be eighty-five to a hundred pages of just what you see there. So this is the most digestible format that contains all of the same information without breaking it out on an individual answer by answer, individual by individual basis.
I understand. Okay, thank you. But were there any questions that were asked that this report does not show?
Not from the city.
Okay, so the, the questions were, these are all here. So I don't think, there's probably not any information that, I was just wondering if it was the summary of the report.
Well, he pulled certain data points for his presentation. You have that separately. What's provided is this attachment one.
Yeah, this is a pretty lengthy survey report, so it might be it.
How many? Well, it is just the first one. I just, whatever attachment it is, I don't remember if it was one or two.
How many people responded?
A hundred and eleven total.
Only a hundred and eleven?
Only a hundred and eleven.
And some of them were not non-residents, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Out of, we have about ten thousand people in the city.
Ten thousand and one.
Mm-hmm, okay. So, hmm, that's interesting.
Okay.
It was open source data, meaning anybody who wanted to, and that was note of, you know, that knew about it, yes. It was open source data that they could respond to.
So the one thing that, here, here's the data point that where I think if, maybe we can just talk through it. With twenty-nine, I'm, page fourteen of twenty-four of the survey data in our packet. Twenty-nine people believe that dedicated pickleball courts, four down, would, question ten, I guess, is the one I'm talking about. Select four amenities of facilities below that you would most like to see at the civic hub. This was the, the pickleball was fourth and then tennis is down and there's the standard and the clay options. I wanted to make sure that this was representative of reasonable group of people because when it's exclusively online surveys, for all I know, the pickleballers and it's, they have a right to do this or the tennis, you know, they share in their groups and they should, a hundred percent should and get the word out. But we, as a council, need to know, is this lopsided a little bit? Because the pickleball issue coming over to, it's already at the C five and then expanding that field, dependent on C is, is the one that I will end and say, I hope we can work through that one. And if it is C five, it's C five. That's great, we move forward, but to explore another home for it. And yeah, that, those are my comments. And I think we got one more workshop to work through this. And hopefully we can give you the direction you need if we need to fill in any gaps now. So thank you.
And we can give you other data, empirical data, national data on certain sports and activities. And we, we collect that because we have a firm wide group of, of four hundred landscape architects across the country. Matter of fact, I had a call today to tap into folks of what they're seeing in the West Coast of the country, what they're seeing all the way into the Northeast. And so I can tell you pickleball is one or two top, even into the multifamily communities that we're doing from suburban to urban. And we're working pickleball into a lot of the multifamily amenity decks on top of, on top of garages. So it is a nationwide enhanced growth because everybody can do it. So not only the older community, but also the younger community can do it to a certain degree more. And I'm a tennis player, too. I'm just saying, that's national recognition. We can give you supporting data for that opinion. Also, we can give you streets that we've actually have built, constructed, well, we didn't build them, but designed them. If you've been to West Palm, all of Clematis is suspended. It's this exact system that we are talking about to remove stormwater from your streets, treat it, house it. It's got pervious pavers so that it actually filters the stormwater, then it holds, and then it's got new beautiful oak trees that are basically in a structural soil or a silva cell environment. The silva cell, again, we talked about Legos and now I'm going to talk about milk cartons. But it basically looks like a milk carton area that you backfill with soil, but allows for you to put back the road so that it holds the structural characteristics. So you're, you can drive on it, you can walk on it. And the trees still have rooting volume because they need air and water circulation without compaction. So there are streets, Clematis is a great one. We've talked to, and maybe it wasn't this council, but we talked to the city of Cape Canaveral, we were talking about City Park back in fifteen and sixteen, specifically about Polk Street and how we could create Polk Street and the Presidential Streets is absolutely looking at that type of thing for your existing streets. And it's extremely viable for this type of solution. So we can give you more where other municipalities are doing it and you can kick the tires, you can visit it, you can Google Street View and you can virtually walk the street, too.
That's fantastic, yes. And again, the stormwater project slows the civic hub project down, but it makes it hopefully a better project. That's our goal. But if we're going to be coming out with streets, I mean, and that might solve it, right? I mean, across the board. Maybe that's too optimistic, but the West Palm system, I'm actually heading down there, I think by the end of the year. And so maybe I'll have to connect with you. And I guess, what would I do? Just drive over pavement and say, underneath me is a stormwater system? There's nothing much to look at?
It's this cross section that I have up on the screen. I don't think I'm sharing right now, but it was in our slide presentation. It was thirteen. It's actually part of your Presidential Streets. This is directly out of the President Street, Presidential Streets, final presentation. And that cross section is identical to what is built and constructed on Clematis Street.
I want to make sure which one, the?
On page thirteen, oh, yes, that cross section. It's a graphic.
Up at the top?
At the top graphic, yes. That's the same concept where you have a, that one specifically is, again, these egg crate type of system. It's called a silva cell or another system that allows the tree roots to freely move within this system without getting compacted. They still get air and water circulation in the storm drainage and the other pipes and the infrastructure are in and around those areas and they pass through those areas. And then the, the treatment volume is pervious pavers and some other things that are within the street between the two curb lines.
So cool. Thank you very much. And that is a twenty-foot street converted into a one-way with a, that's a normal two-lane road, the width of that, that's basically.
We didn't do that on Clematis, but that would be the proposal for some of your one-way streets here in Cape Canaveral. So we've modified it to show what it could be on one of your maybe one-way pair. When I say a one-way pair, meaning you go eastbound on Polk and then you go westbound on another A-Bring Street that actually has access to A-one-A.
Okay, then Fillmore Avenue proposal and options, or Taylor is to be closed?
Taylor would be closed in this option.
For vehicular use? Okay.
And only access from the east, so you could go in, turn around, then come back out to Pointcetta.
Thank you. Councilmember Kellum, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. If we were to keep the tennis courts that, right now, you're showing two and then the six over here. If we kept the tennis courts that we have, how much of that space, I mean, would we be able to do the rest of option A with the stage area? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the size of things and.
We removed three, there were three courts on the south. We removed kind of a half of the one so we could get six pickleball. Because right now you have three courts and we felt like that, actually, I think that's the same exact footprint. It, it should be about the same exact footprint because you can get two pickleball on one tennis court and you have three tennis courts. So we're just showing them this dedicated pickleball.
Okay.
So if you did it on the north two, then you would get four pickleball. Is that what your question you're asking?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if we leave the tennis courts where they are, take out the shuffleboard. And so that, it's, the footprint would be the same as the six pickleball courts. In other words, put the pickleball courts at C five, make this the tennis area and then still have enough room to do the rest of it where the shuffleball courts were.
Yes, all of the event center. Correct, this is only four tennis courts. Like if you look at the north two on that picture right now, you could put two more to the south.
Right.
Currently, there's a total of five tennis courts today.
Correct, there's three to the south, two to the north.
Okay.
And they're kind of offset.
That's what I was.
But all of the event space, all of the swings, all of the stage area, the area where we removed the racquetball court can all be done without impacting or options for pickleball and tennis.
Okay.
In both A and C, in all of these options.
So in the stormwater element of this, if we left those, if we put two tennis courts there, took one out, how much, I mean, and we're going to put stormwater under Fillmore and under Taylor, would that space there make, in, in other words, instead of spending money to rip them up, put the things in, put them back there, could we just keep them and do the stormwater around it?
Sure, yes.
And then the cost would be less. And, you know, the, that much stormwater would make not a huge difference because we're doing stormwater at Veterans Park and down the streets and.
Possibly, but you need, you, it would be more surface area and more volume.
I have a suggestion that might help us. I understand where you're coming from as we're approaching this from a cost perspective. Once we know what the amenities we want to have here, then we will approach the stormwater area in a triage fashion where we're going to do the least cost areas first and only get into the more cost areas if, if we have to. So as Scott said, yeah, if we don't have to take up those tennis courts, if we can fit everything we need in, in that area of Fillmore or that area of Pointcetta and that area of Taylor, why would we tear up anything else? We would approach it with that triage fashion.
Okay.
But we won't be able to make that decision until we know the concept design that we have.
Right. So, and then again, I, I like the, I know we're not considering you, but I like the staging area in view, the stage area and the playground right next to that. So people would be, you know, watching the music or whatever in there. The playground would be right next to them. And then there's other green spaces there for other lawn games or whatever. In, in that design, it's kind of, the other one is like an oval, this one is like, I don't know what you call that. You know what I'm saying? Like, the, the playground's right there, there's green space on each side of the main stage area.
By item three, I think, number three, the swings?
Yeah.
Make that picture larger, Scott, on your screen.
North or south?
Yeah, see where, yeah, it would, where the playground is five, put the stage where three is, leave the playground there. You have green space number two and green space over here, the little triangle for yoga or lawn games or whatever. And then the middle section for, you know, lawn chairs and music.
I think I, I think I understand and I would just, I don't want to contradict myself here, but I think we've accommodated that generally in that same configuration on both A and C. If you did a bubble diagram and described what you were saying, we've tried to do that in both concepts, meaning stage area, this one just happens to be an oval instead of the other shape that we had on the other one. And then the pink area would be like swings and then there would be a smaller playground right there, that number five is kind of that play surface. We're not calling it a playground, it's more of mounds that could be more art and be kind of very versatile. And then option C, you, you basically have a, a little bit larger area because now we have some room in between where we've removed the pickleball or tennis courts. So you still have the big event lawn, you still have the swings and then you still have the ancillary open space and playground.
But it's just bigger, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a little bit bigger, more elongated in that area.
Well, I just think, you know, if we could make this the tennis area and then move the pickleball to C five or anywhere else, I mean, we have other parks as well. And kept this as the tennis area. I like both. I just, I just thought the playground closer to where the stage area is was a better idea for me, but it all looks really good. I like A a lot. I just, you know, why, if it's not broke, don't fix it, you know, the tennis courts?
Right, right. And that's exactly what city manager said. We're not going to force something there and we don't want to take away good courts.
Yeah.
But there, those courts to the south, mainly the one to the east, has had to be repaired because there were some anomalies underneath there. We've done some geotech exploration because for that same reason, we didn't want to design something if there was something subsurface.
Oh, right.
That was causing some issues, just keep it as an existing tennis court or pickleball court today.
Right.
So we've evaluated that. We, we, we think we don't have any necessary issues that are going to cause any of that. But you've had to replace that, at least the resurfacing of that tennis and pickleball court area to the southeast. But we wouldn't, you know, we're going to do a little bit of the analysis on the engineering, come up with some ballpark parameters of area. And if we don't have to mess with it and we can keep all of the existing courts, whether it's strike for tennis or pickleball, we're absolutely going to opine on that so we can give you that business decision.
Right.
Unless we say yes, the, the business decision makes sense to put stormwater underneath it because it's going to give us so much bigger bang or maybe we get a stormwater grant, another one or something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
I have, this, this question's for Molly. If we were to place pickleball, tennis anywhere else, it has to be where staff is located, correct?
In order to guarantee the revenue generation, yes.
Okay, so that limits it to Nancy Hansen or to C five? Thank you.
What was your comment on that? I could not hear that. In order to what?
To generate the revenue.
Okay.
You need somebody physically to provide access or take money or.
But I, I would think if it's, you know, your self-service or some sort, but yeah, that makes sense.
I think that we've come, we've, we've come a long way. Thank you very much. And I think we do have a good idea that we probably would like to keep what we have that seems to be working and it's in decent shape and add to it. You know, we have the stormwater issue as a priority and obviously. And add to it, you know, we have the stormwater issue as a priority and obviously the stage. So I think we can move forward on this.
Are there any?
It's time.
Road splits that we need to clarify for you divided between these options?
Let me just try to tick off the commonalities, right? I think, so that we can work through them. We heard, let's not relocate the dog park. We think it's fine where it is. I think so. Options A and C, leave that option there. I think we want access to and from City Hall. Maybe A and C show more availability for space for more food trucks in that option. I think we want good emergency access. I think all of Taylor wants to be closed without access to A-1A. Those are all things I think everybody has agreed with. So basically, the right side of the plan, the north side of the plan on Taylor is we got A and C pretty well refined in that area. Now we start to evaluate the southern section. I think most people, I thought A and C with the location of the, of the event stage and kind of tucked into that corner, angled back away from the community, whether they hear it, Councilman Raymond or not, hear it or not, maybe not, but they know it's part of it. And then we get back to the tennis and pickleball. We know today that two pickleball courts equals one tennis court. So we can refine this data and leave even a little bit of an outline.
To be determined.
To be determined. Is it two pickleball?
Yeah.
Is it one tennis court?
Yeah.
You know, we can kind of do that for a little bit.
Mayor, if I may, I think that we're right on it. The discriminator point appears to be, do we have those ball courts here or do we have them split between this place and another place? And maybe that's the two designs we need to be looking at.
Right, let's evaluate those two.
And just a comment I wanted to make about that, it was never envisioned that the C-5 would be an outgrowth of the Civic Hub project. That happened quite organically as a result of feedback that came as a result of this project. But there's currently no capital project for the C-5 other than what's finished out there. So this would be a new project and perhaps in next year's CIP workshop, you know, that's where this gets weaved in. But I also wanted to share that when, when we think about a project at the C-5, that is a group of residents that has never had this type of impact. And around, in and around the Civic Hub, people are used to this type of impact, the noise generated by pickleball. And I understand it's louder than tennis. But when we think about that other neighborhood around the C-5, perhaps the less impactful option would be better. And I understand that to be tennis. So if we're just looking at an allocation of square footage of play court surfaces, we should decide how many tennis courts we want, perhaps, maybe this is what we do. Put those at the C-5 and maximize pickleball here in this area. That could help perhaps as one option. And then the other one would be to have all of it still here. But when you put all of it still here, neither the pickleballers nor the tennis players are going to feel like they got enough space. I think if you separate it, they probably will both say we got enough space.
Well, is pickleball and tennis thriving in Cape Canaveral today?
Yes.
Under the existing conditions that we have? I think we're talking about just taking it to that next level and we're feeling the pressure. I understand. I just feel very, I want to be careful and make sure that those folks around there have a say and know. And I can tell you, it's a, it's one of, it's a beautiful green space and it's one of the last green spaces. It's a place that I go out and see kids run and play and using. And so, you know, we're trying to do stuff for the kids and I appreciate that. Pickleball is, you know, that was an existing basketball court. That was the use, basketball. Kids got to open to the public, come and play anytime, weekends wide open. We'd see kids, adults out there having fun. There's a softball field out there, open fresh air, hitting softballs, kickball league tournaments. And then we had the Little League field in the park that's still there today. We improved it and today, now the basketball, the access has, you know, we know that transformation that's happened. But the kids, pickleball is now in there, competing with basketball, competing with that space, volleyball. We've expanded our capabilities, but we're always battling these, who, which sports wins. And I think Cape Canaveral, if we zoom out and we look at all of our spaces and factor some things like Councilmember Willis says, we don't have a lot of options and vertical is a serious conversation I think we're going to have to have. Hopefully not. Hopefully we can make it work, but I'm, I think having the, okay, the parking alone, let's talk about the C-5 parking. Do we know roughly how many spaces there? We shrunk the parking to preserve the trees. We voted for that. And that was a good choice. And to protect the pickleball and/or tennis is a consistent flow of traffic. We know that city staff is going to show up and use parking spots, the limited staff that needs to occupy the facility that's reliable and consistent. We know the days normally they're going to be there. Starts to fill up. We're starting to learn what that looks like on different days of the week. But we throw Little League season maybe in their practices, other uses. And, or just people that want to go down and see the park or the splash pad. There's a lot of uses with a serious parking challenge there. And now we throw pickleball over there, which awesome, but what is that going to do to the parking around there? It's going to change the entire Harrison Avenue feel today even further and maybe more dramatically than the whole MGF in itself. I mean, eight pickleball courts could bring more traffic than the entire C-5 in itself. From the volumes I'm hearing about, we're talking waiting lines, 25, 50 people. I don't know the numbers. Y'all know better than me, but that was my concern. So I want to make sure we're looking at this and today, and I agree, deciding between the safer bet is A, to keep it there and utilize, as Scott said, to flex over and do some, one of these other options. But I think we would hopefully lean with A. And then if we get some, some good ideas to move it over there or another place, then that would be good. But I don't, I think pickleball thrives in this space today and we should make it as nice as we can and try to improve and work within that existing space. And it doesn't mean that they would stop coming for the C-5 facility after they get this space too. I think there's, and it's good. I mean, it's great.
But I think that we need to focus on the design that we're talking about today on our agenda, the Civic Hub. So I think that's what we should be focusing on right now.
And I'm saying A seems to be.
The only thing about A is that the lady that came up and talked and said, you know, that they don't have enough tennis courts. They're playing pickleball inside of C-5. They can't play tennis inside of C-5. So we need more tennis courts.
Well, that, Council, I'm going to lean to Mayor Pro Tim Raymonds. I mean, the two is what she originally had talked about. Improving the quality.
Right, at this point, we need four tennis courts for the women's tennis that plays on Space Coast Tennis. We have two teams playing here. And because of that, now the teams do use the tennis pro. Each team uses a tennis pro. My senior team uses a tennis pro Mondays and Fridays. The other team is using it, the tennis pro on Tuesday to coach. Then they play on Thursday. We have two teams playing on Thursday. So most of the time, those tennis courts will be occupied on Thursday. So pickleball from 8:30 to 11 is not going to happen on those days, I understand. They need four courts on Thursday. On Mondays, we need three. And preferably without the pickleball lines, but we have pickleball lines, so we're making do. Our guests who come are not happy with pickleball lines because the ball does bounce differently if it hits a pickleball line. That's the way it is. We're making the best out of it. And I think that, I agree that we go ahead and use the amenities that we already have. But I do think we need to focus this conversation on the Civic Hub. Let's not worry about other future projects. And I think that's what our city manager was trying to say. So, and I think we've done a good job tonight discussing this. Thank you.
The space shown on, on Option A could still basically with some minor tweaks, still keep three, the courts that are there today. Three, could be five total tennis courts or you could stripe all of them with pickleball and you could have up to 10 pickleball. Now, that may not be preferred and that could be, but that's a, that's a striping plan and a striping option. It's not major changes within this plan that we can move forward with. And then, you know, that, that outline of those courts, those space could still basically be accommodated on, on what you're looking at for Option A.
And as far as a stormwater project, that's going to, would be the fastest, most accessible from a high level view, right? There's no trees. It's a pad of concrete, I would imagine there where the, I mean, if you just, you would disrupt the operations of, I guess, tennis use and access, but. Okay, so Todd, Scott, well, I think you talked about focusing on, Todd, that pickleball or not, the C-5 on Harrison Avenue. And I think A gives us that, but I want to make sure we.
My, my point was that the C-5 was never intended to be tied to the Civic Hub. It was, it came, it came organically that way, that people said we could put some of this surface area over there. I'm not sure the council's wanting to do that its time in this next few fiscal years even. So as Councilmember Raymond said, if we're focusing on the Civic Hub, let's make it the best we can make it for today to accommodate food trucks, farmers markets, Friday Fest, pickleballers, tennis. And then if, in the future, after this is done, if we say, you know what, we do need more tennis or we do need more pickleball, we make that another project for that day.
So in A, we could, if A happened and Mayor Pro Tim says we need four and she's right, in three years, we could convert that to four and the green space is sitting right there or whatever place. Okay.
So Scott, I think your job got easier there because it sounds like we have consensus to not look at the C-5 for any project, if I'm reading the council correctly on that. Your deliverable for next month is, is just one option? We're not even, it sounds like we're ready to hone in on a single option at this point.
And I think Option A, and we can show you, maybe we can do a little bit more. We can pull back the layer and see how much of those courts that we actually ate into where you see the six pickleball courts now. And we can kind of compare it and make sure, I think we left all of that, those courts there. But we'll verify and make sure, do a little overview and make sure so that if that's the way it is today, we're not disrupting that just a little bit.
It is not like this today.
Because that court goes into that a little bit.
Yes, it goes directly south from the building line of Nancy Hansen.
Into that, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So you would, yeah.
The pickleball courts are the southern part of the tennis court. And the other one that is west, those are the ones that have the pickleball lines. The tennis courts that do not have pickleball lines are the two that are south and east.
And that could be modified throughout. You've got to resurface. You've got to do some other things. When you do that the next time, then we kind of figure that out. But you're absolutely right, Todd. I totally forgot. That's, those two tennis courts would be mirrored on the south plus one more tennis court south of Nancy Hansen where we've got that extra little swing and play mound space.
Yeah, that's just if we're keeping the same amount of surface area for court surface.
Right. And I think if you look at, again, we can just provide it to you, but again, we're talking about a 60 by 120 area for a tennis court. And you could probably get three in that southern portion. And we were not even talking about, I hate to bring up C-5 again, but I'm just saying, we weren't, we weren't planning all of the open space.
Yeah.
We were trying to be understanding of what it's used for. And then that certainly can get pushed to a later time. Again, we, we just, and it came up anecdotally, it kind of came up as a byproduct as we listened to the public, as we dove into the public comments, as we started thinking about the tension. How could we create less tension and then just separate them? Was another reason why we pitched it and said, well, what if we did this?
Not a bad idea at all.
You know, and so that's why we hate to get outside of our boundary sometimes, but we just wanted to float it by for discussion too, so.
No, I think it was a good discussion. It just wasn't a project we were planning to do.
Right.
And it can continue, I think, but yeah, for tonight, A works, that keeps pickleball. I mean, C-5's still there. I can see why the pickleballers would say, hey, what, I'd be looking for open space. That's a space. It's zoned. Everything lines up nice. And as long as, you know, I think that the residents, and I don't need any data or anything. I was just making sure that, well, was it a bunch of pickleballers that submitted, you know, out of 50 to 30 or 40 of them that may have skewed the data a little? That, and it didn't look like that. It looks like maybe a third or so liked it. And just because they voted pickleball doesn't mean they play pickleball, especially on the top four uses, so.
So I think I have clarification, Mr. Minister. We say Option A.
Yeah, I was just going to, I was going to try to make a clarification statement for the minutes and hopefully get council consensus. As I understand it, we want to hone in on A, keep all the court surface area there. We might play with the percentages, but keep the amount of court surface that we currently have today, not reduce it. Find a way to make that work within the options of A. Incorporate the other things that Scott said, including, you know, keeping the dog park where it is, closing off Taylor Avenue, the, the building where the mural wall is, all those things that we like about A. And bring back one, one conceptual drawing with all of that brought into it for the next meeting. Is that the consensus of council?
I think you got it. Very good.
Does that help, Scott?
Yes, sir.
If, Mayor, if I may, I know we're approaching probably closing, but I've been, something I've been itching to read here. And if I may, Zach brought this back. Zach and Lexi and Kyle went to the American, or the Florida Planning Conference last week and they, you know, Zach, he's always taking notes. So he took some great notes and I wanted to read these if I could. At the conference, they talked about public spaces. They say cities of all sizes are on a competitive race to attract and retain their tax base. Because in the post-COVID world, many jobs are now virtual and employees expect a level of transitory lifestyle. How do cities then keep people around if their jobs are not guaranteed to remain fixed? Public spaces. People want to be outside more. They want to visit new and exciting spaces, given their new level of job flexibility. Beautiful public spaces are how cities attract and keep these people today. And for a city that doesn't have any true tourist attractions like the city of Cape Canaveral, this is even more important. Public spaces give a reason for travel, investment and residency within a city.
Very nice. Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Scott, you can have the final word, sir, or anything?
No, thank you. Thank you for the dialogue. Thank you for the just robust engagement. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. Very nice. We have a third item to set the time. You're right. Okay, counsel. So the third and final item is to set the third and final workshop. I think a proposed date in here is October 17.
Day of a council meeting.
The day of our council.
Yeah, it's a six o'clock regular council meeting that day, correct me, yeah? Yeah. And the thought behind was that, because council would already be together here and not have together on an additional day. But Scott and we are all flexible to whatever the council wants to do. Seventeenth.
Scott, could you do the presentation in a 30 minute? Do you need 30 minutes? How many minutes do you need?
You're saying I just need to be way brief, way more brief is what you're saying?
Yes, thank you. But I mean, what I'm thinking of, I mean, we've discussed just about everything. And so it's just a matter of showing it to the people again, the way that you have. And so it's just a matter of showing it to the people again, the way that you have it done here, explaining the major items and that's it. So is 30 minutes enough or do you need more than 30 minutes? I mean, people could come at a time.
There may be some follow-up based on the detail we give you. We're at the.
Okay, so do you need one?
Volume of the funnel and we move down, we'll probably have questions about how does the stormwater fit into that space? How are those costs associated that we're probably?
All right, so do you need more than 30 minutes?
I would say we probably need more.
Oh, then I. We're going to have to do five o'clock then, correct? Five o'clock?
I, I.
What do you think?
I think a different day or earlier is the best. Tonight was successful, I think, because we, we didn't stop at 6:30 because it's 30 minutes prior to a meeting. I mean, look at the things we accomplished. I agree, you know, we don't have to go back through this stuff.
I hope not.
We can now pick up on, but I don't want to do that to ourselves if we can't, so.
What's the next reserve date, October 3rd? So Mayor, the next following reserve date would be October 3rd, Tuesday?
Oh, no, you can't do that. That's the sheriff's day. Sheriff Wayne Ivy, that's National Night Out.
Yeah, that one's tough.
So the following after the 17th would be November 7th.
Well, what about, what does it have to be on Tuesdays?
It's just that we've reserved that date for council extra meetings on the calendar every year.
Oh, I see what you're doing. So you're grabbing, well, we don't have to do that though.
We don't have to.
I think we should just do the hour ahead at five o'clock.
Keep it on the same week.
So.
If, if we want to, as far as giving.
Two days in a row is a little bit much, I think, for our staff and for the council.
We're doing three this week. It's hard, it's hard to organize five to seven people's schedules. We do need to take it easy on ourselves. Is there a way that we can efficiently get some, some times and then you ultimately navigate it?
We've certainly done that before. Council members can put some suggestions out and then Mia's office can distribute and get votes for them. And I know that council members don't always get their way, but you always accommodate each other.
We'll, we'll figure it out. Okay.
TBD.
Thank you.
We were generally projecting the 17th based on the amount of detail that we were going to add. So we would respectfully ask for closer to the 17th.
Yeah, not before.
Beyond, but not necessarily too far before, so we can't get you the data you need.
How about we say not before the 17th, but between the 17th and say the 26th?
That would be preferred.
That's a Tuesday to a Thursday window.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, counsel? Commander, anything we need to know?
No, sir.
Thank you all very much. Meeting's adjourned.